This regular meeting of Navasota City Council is called to order on this Monday, the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty-five, in council chamber. Let the record show all council members are present, welcome, and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cell phones in the silent mode. And visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Had a lot going on this weekend, we. Have a lot on my mind, I'm sure you do too, and everybody here does as well. So let's pray. Thank you for your many blessings, Father, and the sustenance you provide. We will bring under your authority now and under the authority of Jesus Christ. In the name of Jesus Christ and your Holy Spirit, manifest your spirit in our community lives, lead and guide and direct the leaders of our city. We renounce and bind all the ungodliness that could ever take place in any of our proceedings. We bless all, the dealings that we have with each other be filled with your grace and your spirit. We take authority in Jesus' name to cancel every claim the enemy can make here by the blood of Jesus Christ. We proclaim life, living, and restoration of the hill country and beyond. May your spirit and love rest on all who have lost family and belongings. May we ever remember Psalms twenty-three, verse four. "Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death." And that shadow would be, for your notes, darkness, lost, lost grief, disappointment. We will fear no evil, knowing without a doubt you never let go of our hands. We give you thanks and praise for the folks, the first responders, law enforcement who have responded in the recovery, who made the sacrifice to help, and pray as they continue to do so. Let us continue to remember those who continue to protect the families in our community, our county and state, plus we include our nation, our leaders, our military, to the rule of Jesus Christ and to the Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit, come and fill every part of our lives with the glory of your kingdom, with love, with peace, with holy rest. Jesus, we ask your angels to establish your kingdom here, to build a shield of protection around it. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ the Lord and to the kingdom of God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Three remarks of visitors. First is Rochelle Herr.
Hello. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Rochelle Herr, and I've been truly blessed to call Navasota home for the past ten years. I've established two businesses right here on the corner of three oh-two East Washington Avenue, and I'm honored to stand here before you today representing the Friends of Navasota Public Library. I'm out about them neighbors, I'm sorry. A nonprofit organization, I have had the privilege of co-founding with my dear friend and president, Robin Presley. As you can see, our efforts are greatly enriched and dedicated by the community-minded citizens who have joined us today, those lovely people in blue. I'm delighted to share some of our recent successes. So far this year, we have raised nearly three thousand dollars through the generous support of local businesses, various grants, and our popular book sales. These funds have been directly channeled into supporting the wonderful events and programs at our local library. I'm sure you see them posted on our Navasota City page and our social medias. For instance, just tonight, the library is hosting a balloon animal workshop, and we were thrilled to be able to provide forty hot dogs to, sorry, forty corn dogs from Sonic to the kids coming to the balloon animal program tonight. It's exciting for them, and it's, I think, a relief too, to the parents, and it was fun seeing all the kids show up anticipating something fun happening, right? We've also been able to provide supplementary supplies, snacks for events, and, sorry, somebody's calling me, I'm trying to get them off, and contribute to the library's enriching environment. I believe we all share a common interest in the future of our cherished library, and it is with that shared commitment that I wish to invite us to consider some important questions today. Number one is the proactive, proactively investing in our library's future. Approximately five years ago, a study was commissioned by the city that cost forty thousand dollars. I'm curious to know who did that and why it cost forty thousand dollars to assess the building, and they assessed the needs of our library. At that time, the comprehensive assessment indicated that a new roof installation would have cost two hundred thousand dollars. However, the decision was made then to apply a seal coat to the existing roof, and that only cost twenty thousand dollars, which I can see. Today, it appears the projected cost for a new roof in twenty twenty-five has risen to four hundred thousand dollars, and we understand that the current plan again involves a seal coat rather than a full replacement. This pattern of addressing maintenance needs, while perhaps seemed fiscally responsible to do then, has unfortunately resulted in escalating costs, and it raises concerns about the long-term integrity and functionality of a very valuable community asset. I feel like it's crucial that we collectively consider the most effective, sustainable, long-term solution for our library's infrastructure. And unless you all have broader plans that I'm unaware of for our library's future, like maybe a new building, my hope is that we can collaborate together and resolve this problem expediently before any more damage.
Good times.
Oh, has it been three minutes? Dang it! Ugh!
Good evening, council, mayor. Very thankful for you guys and all the hard work you do, the hits you take also. Just briefly, I just want to talk, my address, seventy-nine oh-three Putter Place Court, in a beautiful division out there at Pecan Lakes. Just want to mention, and was for my own knowledge, and some folks that have brought this up in regards to code enforcement, and I know that Lupe and his department is responsible for that, and I just want to encourage to make sure he has the resources to do that as us being a growing community, and I know that these guys are all scrambling, doing the curly shuffle to keep up with things. But code enforcement, and I'm specifically talking about homes that have pools, and there is one right here on East Washington, beautiful old historical home that has an in-ground pool with no fencing around this backyard or this pool, and I just see this and other above-ground pools even, but this one is specifically because there is nobody, the home is vacant. And I just, as a parent, grandparent, and all that, and a member of this community, and I don't want all your hard work of budgeting stuff to get sucked into a lawsuit or something. Young kids, they tend to be adventurous, and I can see some young kids getting over there messing around, playing in that pool, and one of them or a bunch of them end up in that pool and somebody drowns. And so I just want to make sure that Lupe and code enforcement have the tools, if it's not in your code enforcement, whatever the specifics of that are, that it covers that situation where that owner of that property is required by law, by your county, city codes that they put up, that pool is protected from the general public, young people specifically, to prevent any kind of a tragedy like that, which is going to end up tangling us all in a liability lawsuit. So I just want to put that on the record and be an eyes and ears, because I know, again, you guys are doing a great job, hard job, and we're very thankful for that. And thank you.
Connie Clements.
Connie Clements, three hundred Hillside Street in Navasota. And I didn't get here in time to fill out a form for the budget workshop, but I wanted to make some comments about the reserves. This is something that's bothered me for a while. In two thousand thirteen, when I started coming to city council meetings, the goal at the time was six months of reserves. And I watched as our former city manager, Brad Stafford, and Lance Hall brought that up. By two thousand fifteen, they'd achieved that, and they were very proud of it. The last three years, the reserves are down like two to three months in some funds, and I've asked for an explanation because I'm not an accountant, and really just kind of received some accounting mumbo jumbo. I didn't understand it, why that seemed to be acceptable. And comparing the city and the counties like comparing apples and oranges, I know that, but we have a debt-free county, and we have an auditor who's a Navasota high school graduate, and she is very strict on maintaining six months of reserves, and the county's doing quite well. Back in two thousand fifteen, we had a fiasco out in the oil industry that affected the industrial park, and in two thousand sixteen, the city had to lay off twenty-one employees, and that was not a very good thing. Then we had COVID, and then we have hurricanes, and tornadoes, and so we know that there are a lot of things that can happen, and I really think that we should strive for best practices in return to six months of reserves.
My name is Suzanne Sieszewski. My address is eight zero one one Candor Court in Pecan Lakes Estates. I would like to finally get some answers on my water bill. I have lived at the golf course subdivision since October. Since October, my bill has gone from a hundred and four dollars to one forty, to two sixty-five, to two thirty-eight, all the way to this month, my bill is three hundred and eighty-six dollars. I'm a single woman that lives in my house, all alone. I have made multiple phone calls, spoke with multiple people, and I have to no avail no answers. My water bill is almost four hundred dollars. I need some help, and I don't know what else to do. So I'm laying this out there. If somebody can come back to me and give me feedback, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Susan, Mr. Hemminger's got a business card here you can take, and anyone else that would like that, he will make those available to you. Karen Carter.
My name is Karen Carter. I do not live in the city, but I own several properties in the city. I am representing a newly formed nonprofit organization called Animal Allies of Grimes County. Our focus is to provide support for animal shelters and rescues in our area. I'm sure there are many people here that have an animal and consider them part of their family. I believe a major concern in Navasota is the dumping of animals and the freedom of many animals to roam freely. I have personally suffered an attack by a dog in the past, and I also have statistics dating from June twenty twenty-five on the dangers of injuries caused by animal bites. And I have that packet, and I'm going to email all of you the information. I would like to know where the donation from Charlie Diggs at the birthday bash of five thousand dollars going to the animal shelter, what it was used for. I haven't seen any change in the animal shelter. I've been over there numerous times, and they are in dire need of certain things. I have also read the city of Navasota's seeking applications for boards, commissions, and committees. It states the city is looking to fill vacancies on these, but it doesn't address new committees that might be needed. When I first visited the animal shelter, I learned of the rodent problem the employees were having because the food was being stored in the building in which they worked. So I purchased and donated a twenty-foot storage container to solve the problem of rats getting into the animal food. But I understand that the rodent issue still exists, and that evidence is found in the animals' water bowls. Does this pose a threat to the animals or the city staff working there? How is this issue being addressed? We seek to come alongside and support our new city manager, which I met this evening, and in this one troubled area. We're looking forward to helping as much as we can to work alongside the police, the volunteers, and help people adopt a new furry friend, but we also need major improvements over there. There are some bad problems. So I was glad to see it on the agenda. So I didn't know what steps I needed to go through to possibly form its own committee, and we're not asking for any money, we're just asking the money that we raise to be put towards, and that five thousand dollars, we don't know. We haven't seen any change over there at all. And it could be because we were in between city managers too. So just consider that. Okay? Thank you.
Staff report. We have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, July is Parks and Recreation Month. I'm going to try to get that one from you. Do that. It went up scroll. Oh.
They didn't fill out a form.
You didn't fill out a form.
They have to be brought to me prior to the meeting. It says that at the bottom of the form.
That one off. Come on up here. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Navasota, Texas. Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental well, mental health of people who live in the community. Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space to popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. Parks and Rec increases a community's economic prosperity through the increased property values, expansion of the tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Bert Miller, the mayor of the city of Navasota, do hereby recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Navasota dated this fourteenth day of July. You have up here joining us.
Sure, so we have Michael Minger, who's on our park board. We have Anna Romero, who is our Parks and Recreation manager. We have Edward O'Glin, who is our new community services attendant, and we have Kylie Gettke, who is our Parks and Recreation specialist.
I am here tonight to address the issue of residents being overcharged for sewer rates. This problem was first identified to me in April, when residents at Pecan Lakes noticed unusually high bills and couldn't understand why. Some residents saw their sewer rates jump in excess of sixty dollars a month per month. Myself and a fellow Pecan Lakes resident, Kyle Zalkowski, agreed to look into it and offered help in understanding the charges and the math behind it. We discovered that instead of using the correct averaging months of December, January, and February, which is required by the city charter, the utility department was using November, December, and January instead. We notified residents to contact the city utility department and request an adjustment and credit using the correct month average. We also posted in a local Facebook group to urge residents to take a closer look at their bills and contact the utility department if they felt there was an issue. Again, this was in April, so the utility department became informed of the problem then. There was also multiple instances of residents who were being overcharged contacting the utility department, only to be told that the math is correct and there wasn't an issue. Then the utility rep would backtrack and agree that yes, there was a mistake once the error was clearly pointed out to them. I am aware that the city utility department has finally begun issuing credits and adjustments, and I appreciate that. However, it's unacceptable that it took from April until July for this to be addressed, despite the fact that the problem was clearly identified months ago. There are a lot of residents in Pecan Lakes that are on fixed incomes. I have three specific questions and requests tonight. One, why did it take so long to audit the billing system and correct the mistake once the utility department was made aware of it? What concrete steps will the city and utility department take to ensure this kind of error does not happen again? And will the city provide a full, transparent account to the public detailing exactly what went wrong, how many residents were affected, the total amount overcharged, and how the final credits were calculated? Residents deserve accurate billing, prompt resolution of mistakes, and transparency about how their money is handled. I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Kyle Zalkowski.
I'm not going to take too much time, pretty much just echoing Shannon, and I signed up in case she ran out of time because I knew that she had something prepared. Like she mentioned, we did do quite a bit of legwork for, I don't know, thirty different people in the neighborhood, looking at about six months' worth of bills for them to figure out where this error occurred. In my case, it saved me three hundred bucks a year just to find that error. So I would urge council to direct staff, if it hasn't already been done, to audit that, to see if that was a system-wide issue. If it has already been done, great, thank you. I know Mr. Harris engaged with us a little bit online on a Facebook group thing. I think Shannon had made the post asking for people to give their bills to us to look at and different stuff if they were okay with that. I appreciate you corresponding with us and taking it seriously. But it seems to be a very big, broad error, and I don't know if it was just the months of usage in general, people had high usage in November or something, but when it calculated from November through January instead of December to February, it adds up real quick. So appreciate y'all's time, and if it hasn't been something looked into, I think everybody here would appreciate that being looked into.
Bert Bearden.
Bert Bearden at seventy-nine oh-four Putter Place Court. I appreciate you taking us out of order. I apologize for the etiquette mistake, but again, thank you for letting us speak. The two previous speakers have covered maybe a lot of what I wanted to talk about. I am concerned about rising utility bills. You know, I've seen months where my city bill doubles my electric bill, and you know, in the years I've been paying utility payments, I've always expected utility payments, you know, to be exactly the opposite, where the electric bill tends to be much more than a city bill. And so was definitely concerned, you know, when we realized the mistake that I had on my water bill. Fortunately, the credit was not huge, but it would have been several hundred dollars a year, you know, if it would have continued. A reach out to the city, they corrected it. I guess the action I expected in that process, though, was once the city utility department became aware of it, was that they would say, oh, we have a problem, let's fix this, let's audit our system, and let's go through and get it corrected. And unfortunately, one of our neighbors was recently told it would only be corrected if someone pointed it out to them. And so, you know, I think at that point, it became clear that we needed to say something to each of you, our elected representatives. to each of you, our elected representatives. And so, I appreciate your service, I appreciate you being willing to look into this, and I hope you do. I don't know the total scope of that error, and you know, again, I'm a single person living alone. How it may affect commercial accounts, manufacturing operations, such as the one I work for, I don't know, but it would be interesting to see how that works out. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Councilman Holt, welcome back to council. I congratulate you on your appointment. And so, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak out of order tonight, so, thank you.
All right, still under the staff report, we have some new staff.
Yes, sir. Mayor Council. First, Anna Romero, our Parks and Recreation Manager, is gonna introduce a couple of new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We would like to welcome two new employees to the City of Navasota Community Services Department, both assisting at the Navasota Center, Swimming Pool, and Library with programs, classes, facility rentals, and also special events. So, the first one I'd like to introduce is Ms. Kylie Getzky, she's right here. Kylie is a native from San Antonio, is a recent graduate from the University of Texas. I'm sorry, another phone call. But she is doing wonderful, and a dedicated member of the Navasota Community Services Department. She leads the city water aerobics classes, and she is actually having about 25 ladies showing up every Tuesday and Thursday, so we're really proud of her. She leads combining fun, fitness, and accessibility for all skill levels. Kylie has a strong passion for helping the community live a healthier, more active life through inclusive and affordable recreational programming. In her free time, she enjoys paddle boarding and spending time with her two cats. So, welcome to the team, Kylie. Give us both of them, and then I guess we'll go take a picture. Perfect. Our next one is Eduardo Olgin. He is originally from Anderson, Texas, and Eduardo is currently working on obtaining a bachelor's degree from the University of South Houston State in Business Administration. He has a passion for business and leadership, and actually has two part-time jobs, so we're really proud of him. He works really hard for the library and also for the Navasota Center. He plans to graduate in the spring of 2026 and looks forward to starting a successful business career. Welcome to the team, Eduardo.
Thank you.
And Chief Mize is gonna introduce Sergeant Lee.
Mayor, City Council, Mike Mize, Chief of Police. I want to introduce you tonight to our new Patrol Sergeant, Roy Lee. He comes with 34 years of law enforcement experience, a little over 10 years of supervisor experience, so he's gonna take over Sergeant Drake in the Patrol Division.
And I believe Lupe is going to introduce our new building inspector.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Just a brief introduction here for Josh, we're excited he's on the team. A little bit about Josh, Joshua Ward, him and his wife have actually lived in Navasota for about three years now. They have a 21-year-old daughter attending A&amp;M as a senior currently. I knew that was coming. And a six-year-old son, Joshua II, who attends elementary school locally, so I guess we know who the favorite is there, the second. Joshua joins the city with experience in the electrical field, as well as being a small business owner for over 15 years. He's excited to bring his skills and passion to our team. His first day was June 23rd, and he's been absorbing like a sponge, working with Nick every day. I know Nick's glad he's here, helping him out with inspections, and so, yeah, we're excited to have him on board and looking forward to a successful future.
And next, Mayor Council, our project manager, Matt Julian, will give a CIP update.
Good evening, City Council, Matthew Julian, Public Works Project Manager. Work has resumed on Elevator Storage Tank Number Three. Contractors mobilized on June 25th and are currently working on the steel fabrication of the tank itself. There's a lot of welding going on out there, a lot of big parts. Interesting to see what's gonna happen in the near future. I'll be sending pictures in during the weekly updates as progress is being made, but right now, it's just a lot of welding. The rain hopefully hasn't slowed them down too much, but they're moving along. As of now, we're so scheduled to be on, to complete on time. The street maintenance project is trying to start. Our utility guys have gone out there and marked all of the valves, manholes, anything that might be in the way and might get hit. The street department did go through and cut any low-hanging limbs that might hinder their work, and they were scheduled to start today, but we did not see them out there today, so we'll be making phone calls tomorrow, see if they need to revise their schedule. They are planning to start on Turner, Tyler, Burton, and Wood Joe Jackson when they do come, and that work will take about 30 days. And along with that, our tree trimming project also started last week. They're working on the right-of-ways on that side of town, and work should take about 30 days. I have a bit on the Candlewood Water Main Extension, that is, project has taken off. We met with the engineers two weeks ago, and they started kind of middle of last week, starting to run the water mains. They're still waiting on text-out approval for that last section, but once that's done, we'll get it hooked up, we'll get it pressure tested, get it back T-tested, and once it's done, it'll be in service, providing more water volume to the hotel. The Brozig Street pedestrian project, the work on the retaining wall is going very smoothly. They're working pretty quick on it. There is the issue with the bridge that we're trying to get resolved. Staff did meet with Tech dot in the last week, and the issue that we're having is the bridge design itself, when it's in place, will not let the sidewalks be ADA compliant. So, there's a mix-up there, so we are currently working with Tech dot on some options and see how that's going to take place. The, in our budget, we had money in there to do some building renovation at the wastewater plant. All of that work is complete, that job has been taken care of. We also, we're gonna do some belt press overhaul at the wastewater plant. That project was started, but the contractors did not have all the parts they needed, so they will be coming back to finish that work, but the machine is put back together and it is in operation until they come back. There's also some more parts they found that they think need to be replaced, so we're working on getting a change order quote for what that's gonna cost, see if we can get that done. And then, last thing at the wastewater plant, the lift, the air blowers, the second one has been installed. We are waiting on startup on July 21st, and that will complete that project. And that's all that I have for tonight. Is any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any reports from council for boards and commissions? I do, I've got P&amp;Z. There was an approved zoning change on Interstate Drive for vehicle trailer sales, and an approved development plan for 612 East Washington for a day spa. I want to thank all the work that was done by staff for the Freedom Fest, I think it was another very successful event. Looked to me like turnout was as good, if not better, than in prior years. And want to thank the, all the sponsors that helped support that so that everyone could enjoy that free of charge. Water aerobic swim lessons still going on at the pool. Pool's open through the 3rd of August, I believe, is that the right date? Okay? And activities continue at the library, at the Navasota Center. Just make sure you're connected and stay in touch on the city's Facebook page, also the website, and the Chamber of Commerce calendar also covers everything that's going on with the city. So, just a whole lot of stuff going on, and I know that if the kids hadn't figured out that there's lots of stuff to do, they're, I don't know what planet they're on, so. The opening of the, or the season reveal for the Navasota Theater Lounge is coming up on the 18th of July, 7 o'clock. The 21st through the 24th will be a soccer camp, so we, kids out for that. On the 4th of August is the update, that we're updating our comprehensive plan, and we're gonna have a town hall on 8th, on the 4th of August, that's from 6 to 8 at the Navasota Center. And there's also a survey that you can participate in by going to navasotatx.gov and go to that survey and fill that out as well. Coming up on the 5th of August is Back-to-School Health and Safety Day at the Expo Center, Grums County Fairgrounds, from 10 to 1. And down the road a little bit, but want to get you on your calendars, if you're able. We're having a blood drive coming up, the American Red Cross, at First United Methodist Church on August 20th. And go to, it's real easy, go redcrossblood.org, and you can register and set the time that you'd like to donate.
Mayor, I've got one additional announcement while you're getting to the next item. We've got a good crowd here tonight, so I just wanted to really advertise and hopefully get everyone here to talk to your neighbors. We are in the process of doing this comprehensive plan that the mayor just talked about, there's gonna be several town halls, there's the online survey. We also are going to be kicking off of Parks and Recreation, hopefully as long as the council authorizes tonight. We're gonna be kicking off a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which will also be looking for community input. The only way we can give Navasota residents the Navasota they want is by hearing the input, so please participate in those. There's gonna be a lot of opportunities coming out, you might get tired of taking surveys, but really, that's the way we're gonna hear your input and follow, and those plans will hopefully be what you're looking for because we got your input. And also, just kind of with, in mind what's going on in the Hill Country, we have a local emergency notification system called NAV notify. If you have not signed up, please do so, get your loved ones to sign up. It has the ability to sign up for weather alerts so that you get something specific that if something is issued by the National Weather Service for Navasota. So, please make sure that you and your loved ones are signed up on that to get emergency alerts. You can also get community events like parades and things like that, you don't have to get those things, you get to choose what you subscribe to, but I would encourage everyone to at least get the emergency alerts. Thank you, Mayor.
You can get that by text?
On the website, yeah, you can get them through, yeah, a lot of different sources, and you can sign up on our website.
Item five, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding a zoning change application submitted to the City of Navasota by Don Parkinson for the property located at 9314 Interstate Drive, Navasota, Texas, 77868. Zoning change application requests to change zoning from Ag Open to M1 Light Industrial District to allow for the operation of a vehicular sales use. Property affected is legally described as A0046J Moore, tract 63-1, 1.279 acres, and time is 6:43.
Mayor, City Council, Lupe Diostado, Development Services Director. As you summarize, Mayor, the proposed application is seeking a rezoning request. The zoning application was submitted on June 11th. The property is located inside the Navasota Industrial District and along Interstate Drive. This particular tract was actually annexed by the city earlier this year and received the agriculture open space zoning designation, outlining the ordinance. The project representative on the application, Mr. Nicholas Harmon with Trailers of Texas, is here tonight, if y'all have any questions regarding the request. And he is proposing to operate a vehicular sales use, which is a permitted use in the requested light industrial zoning designation. As the mayor mentioned earlier in the report, planning and zoning did hold a public hearing on June 26th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning change as presented. And the attached ordinance reflecting those changes has been reviewed by legal counsel for y'all's consideration. And again, Mr. Harmon is here tonight, if y'all have any questions, as well as the property owner, Mr. Josh Parkinson, he is the son of Don Parkinson, the property owner, and I believe he has authority to do so, so if y'all have any questions.
Want to just briefly come up and tell us kind of what you're looking to do there on the property, just for the background?
My name is Nicholas Harmon, I reside in Brenham, Texas, and looking to bring the business to Navasota. We're a tank trailer dealership, so we buy and sell new and used tank trailers. Any of the equipment that we would bring in there would be washed out internally, so there's no hazards or anything like that, but we operate just like a new and used car dealership, we buy and sell to the public. We represent owner operators, you know, sell to them, or all the way up to large corporations. The company was started in 1995, I've been there 13 years since 2012, and I'm now 100% of the business ownership effective last month. So, looking to move the property, move the business to Navasota, where I reside in Brenham. Previously, we were located in Splendora, I was making a hike four times a week, you know, so be thankful if we can get this approved, you know, to have a shorter commute, you know, bring in, you know, new industry. We have several customers here in Navasota, Key Performance, Navasota Oil, we've sold in the past, so, you know, looking forward to grow the business here. Any questions for me?
Yeah, what was on that property previously? I'm trying to.
It was an oil-filled company.
How many employees are you bringing?
Currently, right now, we have three employees. I'm looking to grow that and add a couple of sales positions with Move, probably get to a number around five by the end of the year is my goal.
So, you're shutting down your business in Brenham and coming to Navasota?
I live in Brenham. We sold our property where we were currently operating out of Splendora, Cleveland, Texas, and we're moving the business here as the plan.
So, you're gonna move to Navasota also?
I'm not gonna move personally, just the business.
Okay. I just thought I'd just throw it in there.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item? There is an open hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Close the hearing at 6:47. Consideration possible action on first reading of Ordinance 1072-25, approving a zoning change application submitted to the City of Navasota by Don Parkinson for the property located at 9314 Interstate Drive, Navasota, Texas, 77868. Application requested change zoning from Ag Open to M1 Light Industrial District to allow the operation of vehicular sales use, legally described as A0046J Moore, tract 63-1, 1.279 acres. Mr. Mayor, I move to recommend approval of the zoning change as presented. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Phillips to approve on first reading, Ordinance 1072-25. Any further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carried. Item six, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding a development plan application submitted to the city of Navasota by Randall Paulus for the property located at 612 East Washington Avenue, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, 77868. Development plan application requests to allow for the operation of a massage day spa business, personal service shop use. Personal service shop uses are listed as permitted uses under the property's current B1 general business zoning district. However, a development plan is a, a development plan approval is required for all mixed use and business uses in the overlay district. The property affected is legally described as H and T C Block 88, Lot 3, 4, and 5, and open the hearing at 6:49.
Mayor, Council, as you read, the development plan is for the operation of a personal service shop use, massage and day spa. The property is located at the corner of East Washington Avenue and Wood Street. And I just want to say, just a quick comment, they have restored the house back to its former glory. There's been a lot of work over the last few months. And if you hadn't had a chance to see it, which I'm sure all of you have, since it's on the main drag, it looks, it looks really good. As you mentioned, personal service shop uses are listed as permitted in B1 zoning districts. The proposed personal service shop use, the development plan has been reviewed by city staff in accordance with applicable laws and codes. And on June 26th, P and D held their own public hearing, and they did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the development plan as presented. And Mr. Paulus and Tina Gwen, I believe, there's, there's, there's Mr. Paulus there? If y'all have any questions regarding the, the business.
I, I do have one question, but it's to you, Lupe. It seemed like that the, the business is already, ready to open. It seemed like that the court was put before the horse. Why are we just not doing this now? And we didn't do it before they got started working on the house?
Yeah, so I think the, I'd say probably the only thing that did kind of get a little bit ahead was the sign. I noticed the sign didn't get placed after the planning and zoning meeting. It hadn't been installed yet, but you know, I think owners just got excited to get it, get it going. But overall, there hasn't been really any, any changes to the home itself. I mean, I think the, the equipment that was used, myself and the building official toured the building, and it's all really just appliances and furniture. But they actually haven't operated the business yet until they hear the final decision tonight. Like I said, the only thing that I think did get a little ahead was the sign placement. It was on the porch and think now it's permanent. But again, I think, I think they were just kind of reeling from the excitement from planning and zoning, voting yes. So hadn't had a conversation with them yet about it, but hopefully today they can answer any questions.
I did notice on the sign too, it had the telephone number and all blocked out.
Correct.
Like it was not officially open yet.
Right, right. I did, I did try to call and book an appointment, but they told me, they told me not to.
Is, is the whole property being used for the business, or are there going to be some residential?
Uh, it has a garage apartment off to the side that's residential, not associated with the business, currently rented, so. And there's, remains to be done a gazebo that has an outbuilding that's going to be, be done. We're still kind of churning on this thing. And I'd like to add that my wife, Tina Nguyen, is Vietnamese, and after the zoning commission meeting, she got really excited, and next thing I know, the, she had gotten ahold of her contractor and the sign was low and behold up, which was against my strong advisement not to. Sorry about that. But I did get her at least to block out personal contact information, and no commerce has occurred on that property yet and won't until you guys give us a thumbs up or down, so.
I would, would have preferred that the entrance to the bargain lot be on Wood Street rather than Washington Avenue, but that's patently not possible type thing, but.
There exists a, a brick wall, which I believe may have some historical content as well. It may have been put up by the railroad back when it founded these lots in the first place or whatever. We hate to knock that down, but it.
I, I think that the building comes back too far too to have a good passageway to it. That's neither here nor there because it's not, really not possible.
Well, they're, they're more than likely you're not going to have multiple customers at one time anyway, so probably, probably a huge amount of getting out of traffic.
Hopefully what we've, what we've got is, and it's, I mean, as you go in the driveway, you can fan off either way. And it's surrounded by street parking on Wood or whatever that wouldn't block any other business or whatever. So hopefully it won't be like a line of cars waiting to get in. Well, then again, maybe we want to. But we'll see what kind of reaction we get if we ever get to operating. We, it's guesswork right now as to what the turnout will be. But a couple of employees and add on somebody if necessary, probably a receptionist or whatever. Be looking around here to see if there's anybody capable of being hired to, to work there as things expand. Everything's up in the air. We'd be happy to see if we could grab some local citizenry and put them to business, put them to work.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this items? Open hearing.
Make her come to the podium.
She'd probably be a struggle for her to get up here. Yeah, that's Ms. Miller.
She's blind.
Yeah, she can't, maybe she could come up to one of y'all's mics.
He's bringing it along.
That's okay. That's okay. With that AV stuff, we might want to get us a portable mic.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Boyce Ann Miller. She's longtime resident. She's forgotten more about this town than I'll ever know, so.
Well, I am Boyce Ann Miller, and I was born here in Navasota a little over 93 years ago. And the house that Randall and Tina have so lovingly saved was parents', my grandparents' house. And I lived there when I was a very small girl. That was Senator H.L. Lewis and my granny Ella Lewis. And they, she lived there until 1944. And a lot of people have since come and gone in the house, done wonderful things and bad things, but Tina and Randall are saving the house. And I hope you all welcome them to Navasota because Navasota is such a loving town. And I can speak for 93 years of loving this town. And I hope that they'll, y'all give the same love to Tina and Randall. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the hearing at 6:56. Consideration possible action on development plan application submitted to the city of Navasota by Randall Paulus for the property located at 612 East Washington Avenue, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, 77868. The development plan application requests to allow for the operation of a massage day spa business, personal service shop use. Personal service shop uses are listed as permitted uses under the property's B1 general business zoning district. However, the development plan approval is required for all mixed use and business uses in the overlay district. Property affected is legally described as H and T C Block 88, Lot 3, 4, and 5.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approved the development plan submitted to the city by Randall Paulus for the property located at 612 East Washington Avenue, Navasota.
Second. Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Foltz to approve the development plan application submitted by Randall Paulus for a property located at 612 East Washington Avenue. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Oh. Who did you say seconded at?
They both did. He got Foltz.
Okay.
Okay.
What I did.
They both said second.
They did, they did. I just. Mr. Foltz was closer, he, he was closer to me, so. We got a double second. Yeah, yeah. Item seven, consideration of possible action on resolution 801-25, accepting the street and underground stormwater drainage improvements for Pecan Lakes Drive excluding entrance signage, all common areas, detention pond, and all open channel storm drainage improvements in the city of Navasota.
Mayor, Council, Pecan Lakes Drive, a minor residential collector, was approved for construction in 2022 and completed in 2023 and opened to the public shortly after that in their interim. Staff has worked with the developer of the roadway, and then most recently, the current adjacent property owners to formally dedicate the property as a true right of way. Before, it went many years as just private development property with the public road on it, and obviously that's not ideal. So anyway, after many years of working through that process, legal counsel assisted in drafting the appropriate right of way dedication instruments and other, and other legal documents to get all this finalized. And so all of the applicable right of way instruments were filed at the county in June of this year, and all of the public improvements at the time back in 2023 were constructed with applicable development regulations. The resolution was also reviewed by legal counsel.
And even with the time passed, the condition is acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, is the sidewalk, is the sidewalk a part of that?
Yes, it is. Originally, it was, I think that was actually a variance granted back in 2023 or 2022 where it sidewalks only on one side, but it is included in the acceptance of infrastructure. The manner was a bit unorthodox because normally you have a street platted in a, or constructed as part of a plat, a subdivision plat, but this was just a, a roadway basically developed inside of non-platted property. And so we had to go through a few, a few hoops, right, Carrie, to, to get it formally dedicated, but that has taken place now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 801-25.
Motion by Mr. Gesner, second by Mr. Harris to approve resolution 801-25. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action on the activity report from Grimes Health Resource Center for fiscal year 2324 and budget request for 2425.
Good evening. The Grimes Health Resource Center's had a successful year, and we continue to look for ways that we can help the citizens in our community. Our clothes closet is going well. We've helped 164 individuals and families with clothing so far this year. And we have been able to give 20 individuals and families hygiene and household items. We also were able to assist 48 families with getting to the food pantry and in getting gift cards for food. We've given fresh vegetables and eggs to 231 individuals and families. We were able to give out 13 hams in December, along with 32 bags of extra food for needy people. So far this year, we have delivered 5,0342 senior meals. 523 people have received rides to 922 locations. 52 people have gotten utility assistance, and a large number of others were given information and/or referrals. Our Go Club is going great. We continue to see a rise in the number of seniors that attend each month, and right now, we average about 30 people per month. We are currently collecting fans to distribute to seniors that do not have air conditioning or a reliable cooling source in their home. And we hope to have these fans to the people that need them by the end of this month. So far this year, we've had 1,393 unduplicated client encounters, and 83% of our clients are from Navasota. We appreciate your support of $8,000 and hope that you would consider increasing that amount to $8,500. Thank you.
I'm here to answer questions. I'm Laura. I'm the director of the Resource Center.
And who did you bring with you?
This is Ms. Velma Smith. She's the president of our board.
I was supposed to say that, but I forgot.
It's okay. Mayor and Council, just one clarification. I think I typed the wrong year, so I think it's, the report was for 2425, the current year, and the request is for the upcoming 2526 fiscal year.
You also do, you probably mentioned it in there, Meals on Wheels?
That was the 5,000, whatever. 342.
Okay, yeah. Lots of numbers there. I was putting them all together.
So far this year, and y'all should have all of that in the information that I sent, so.
I just wanted to point that out because that's really, that's one of the bigger parts of what y'all do.
Correct.
And just a huge amount of volunteer service, but that's not to mention the time that Laura as the director puts in.
Oh, we, I, we love doing this, so.
You gotta love it to do it, right?
Absolutely. Some days more than others.
What do we have budgeted for next year? What do you think your plan is?
I, I think the original, the, up until now, we, we just carried the same number across, but if you all would like us to entertain that and want to give that direction, we certainly can accommodate the additional. Certainly worthwhile. Yes.
Well, no cost of everything continue to go up, so I mean, I totally understand that. I, I move that we support with the $8,500 for the Grimes Health Resource Center for the next fiscal year.
Checky.
Do you need that as a vote?
Yeah, that's what you want. It doesn't have to be, but if you all want to, that's certainly appropriate. It's not inappropriate.
Motion and second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Thank you. Item nine, consideration of possible action on memorandum of understanding between cities. City of Navasota and Workforce Solutions Brazos Valley Board.
Good evening. Tiffany Byers, Community Services Director. So, as I'm sure most of you are aware, we've had a longstanding agreement with workforce. They've provided us with free adult education classes at the Navasota Center for many years. So, they provide a GED class as well as English as a second language. And so, they are looking to renew their memorandum of understanding with us for July first, two thousand and twenty-five until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. And so, the purpose of the MOU just clarifies expectations for both sides. So, they use our building. We do not charge them, and in exchange, they provide the classes. And so, we just have some basic things laid out as far as upkeep of the building and things like that that are in the understanding. And so, we are asking council to approve the MOU between us and the workforce for this next year.
Mayor and council, I had a couple of revisions to recommend, which Tiffany is, she's communicating with the Workforce Solutions Group regarding, let me describe it further, the pretty simple, Roman numeral, Roman numeral number five on page three. The fifth point deals with confidentiality of information. And the provision, as it reads now, declares all this information to be confidential, which I don't think we're in a position to know or understand. And so, what I'm suggesting is adding the phrase, except as otherwise provided by applicable law, that the city agrees to keep the information confidential. And then, the second change that I'm recommending is just a correction. If you look at the next page, Roman numeral number ten, the second paragraph, there's just a correction to the date from two thousand and twenty-five, the termination date is actually two thousand and twenty-six. So, those are the two changes that I'm recommending. Tiffany is working with the group to get those.
Correct. They've been sent over to Jody at the workforce, so they should be made pretty quickly.
So, if you choose to move forward, if you could include.
Just make the, make the motion with those changes.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion with the changes.
I've got another question here before we get to that quote, to the attorney.
Yes, sir.
With the, with the fee that we set here a couple of months ago, would this affect in any kind of way exchanging services with fee?
I think this would fall in the category of the council saying, this is how we want to operate with this particular entity with respect to this facility. This is more of a city, city-sponsored, city-approved.
Well, it's an MOU. It's an MOU, which is separate.
Correct, yes.
A service that the city is offering.
It would be, it would be a city activity rather than a third party coming in, because you're saying, we want to, this is what the parties are going to do for each other. There's give and take. There's exchange. You're receiving public benefit, public benefit for, in exchange for the MOU and the obligations contained therein. So, it would be separate and apart from those fees that you set for this facility. So, it's okay for it to be structured in this manner, council members.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Navasota and Workforce, Workforce Solutions Brazos Valley with the recommended changes by city attorney.
Second. Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessner, to approve the MOU with Workforce Solutions from the City of Navasota with the changes recommended by city attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Councilman Harris, did you say nay?
No.
Okay.
I voted.
Item ten, consideration of possible action authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Burditt Consultants for the Navasota Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan Project.
Good evening. That's me again. So, in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, city council approved funds to develop a parks and recreation, open space, and trails master plan. So, staff took that direction, and we conducted a request for qualifications process. We had three firms submit qualifications, and staff met together. We had a rubric that we used for our scoring process to evaluate all three of those. At the end of it, Burditt came out ahead as far as the scoring that we were looking for. So, we discussed, and it's our recommendation that we move forward with Burditt to do a master plan for our other parks. They were the ones who recently did the Brewley Park Municipal Pool and Navasota Center study for us, so they're really in tune to Navasota. They've also done a study for August Horse back in two thousand and fifteen, when I was here, two thousand and thirteen, somewhere in there. And so, they're well aware of the community. They've been here. They know kind of what we're looking for already. So, as part of that process, they will also work with the community. There will be surveys. There will be town hall meetings and things like that to get that community input. So, we know when we come to budget time, what is most important for the community as far as our parks go. We can sit here and we can think that we know, but it could be something completely different. So, this really helps us when we come to that budget process of knowing what the priorities our community really wants. It also helps to make us more competitive when we go to applying for things like the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants and things like that. So, what we are asking for is that you authorize the city manager to be able to execute an agreement with Burditt to start that master plan process. And I'd like to have something from Burditt.
See Mr. Howard back there. If you have any questions, Mr. Howard is here from Burditt.
But I would have a question for the staff.
Yep.
You know, it makes it hard for me, I don't know about the rest of the council, when we had three people apply for this study for us, and we're going to vote against two of them that we don't have any information on what they offered, and we're going on what staff is presenting to us. I want to know what the other two offered that Burditt, Burditt got top-rated. I mean, what was the difference?
So, the difference came down to, we had a scoring rubric that talked about the thoroughness of their plan, how they were going to involve the community, what were they organized, where are they, the timeline of things. The other two firms, one of them was going to subcontract out. This is not what they do. So, that, there was a concern as far as, are they going to be able to manage a project like this? Another one of the firms is a new firm who was using a prior firm they had worked for represented as their own. And so, we had some concerns over that. They didn't have anything that they had actually worked on in this new firm. So, some of those things were part of what we were looking at. They all submitted proposals, so we looked through to see, were they including the community? How were they going to go about this plan? And so, we really felt like Burditt really understood what we were looking for, and that they were really committed to engaging council, engaging the Parks Board, engaging the community, which is really what we wanted.
I want to follow up by asking a question here to council and the city manager. I know that I've been on the, on the council here two and a half years, going to three years. We've been doing quite a bit of study, but it seemed like nothing come out of the study as moving forward. It seemed like it's just put on the shelf and nothing happened afterwards. So, I mean, is this something that we're going to move forward with, or we're just getting the studies just to?
Yeah, so, if you'd like my input, council, I'm the new guy here, but I'll offer that even as we just saw in our budget workshop, there were a whole lot of items in your strategic plan study that were already yellow and were already highlighted as in progress or complete even. So, I would think you all have been following those studies and, and using those to, to track your projects and to, and to put things in motion and in place. Yes, it is true that you do have some individual park plans that will get rolled into this Parks Master Plan. One of the key purposes, in my mind and in my experience, for doing a Parks Master Plan is to get it to be Texas Parks and Wildlife certified or compliant with their requirements for their grants that come out, so that we can pursue Texas Parks and Wildlife Division grant funds for our park development. And the first key thing that they are going to require is a compliant master plan of your whole community, how all, how you're providing that recreation space and open space throughout your community for all of your residents. And so, I think that would be a big milestone that we would, that we would check with this particular master plan. And as I believe we've discussed in just the short time that I've been here, the comprehensive plan that you all had, I think did guide you through a number of years. The one that's being grant-funded now that we're underway, getting community input, is really just to, to get that input and drive what the next five or 10 years looks like. What do your current residents want for the next five or 10 years? What do they envision their community to evolve into? And I would think we have been using those. I haven't been here that long, but may, maybe not big-ticket, you know, five, 10 million dollar projects, but I think they, those projects and those plans have been used to guide the efforts here, at least from, from my observation.
I just know here, as long before I've got on the council, and as long before I was on TMZ, that it was some kind of study going on the Cedar Creek adventure here to make it more abu-abo. And that's sitting on the sheriff somewhere, and even over here behind your place, Bert Miller, I heard once that it was supposed to be a splash pad there that, that disappeared. I mean, it's a lot of things that we as, I'm gonna put myself in it, because I'm on the council now, have paid to have studies on, but it disappears. So, I don't want to be part of the council that will spend money to have all these studies, and it never comes to reality. That's the only thing I'm saying, is that if we're going down this path, let's make sure that this happens.
Yeah.
If I may, so the first study that Burditt did at August Horse actually included a dog park, so that was something that came out of that. I think the Frisbee Golf was mentioned too. So, there are projects that are coming out. It's just that our parks have, have laid there dormant for a long time. And so, it's going to require a lot of money just to get them ADA compliant, just to get the maintenance done on them. So, when you're talking about big-ticket items, it's kind of a slow process. So, you may see one or two come out of these studies, but it doesn't mean that we're not still moving towards that. It's just a long-term goal. So, that helps us long-term. So, we may just see some of these big-ticket items come out a little at a time, because there are so many other things we have to find.
Yep. I, I do understand what you're saying, but there is a plan out there now that's going to expire at the end of this year, a study. But now, we're going to have another study on top of that study. So, it seems like we're just.
Which one are you talking about?
I, I can't, I can't think of the name, but, but I've got the book down at my shop there that I looked at today before I came. But it's a study of, the parks already been done, and now we're doing another one on top of the one that's been done ten or twelve years ago.
Right.
And like I say, the dog park did come to fruition out of that. Some of those pieces did come to fruition out of that first study.
Yeah, I think Frisbee Golf.
That was a piece of it as well, so.
So, it wasn't, wasn't, wasn't a waste.
Well, I'm not saying that anything is a waste, but if we, if you spend fifty thousand dollars and you just get one park out of it, one small park out of it, that is a waste.
Well, but you also have to wait, find a way to fund those things, and if you can't fund them.
That's what I'm saying, is that, and, and that's the reason I voted against the Brewley Park there, was because we as a council, and I was pushing for this under the previous administration, was that we need to find out ways to fund these things before we just up and pay money to hail a study down, to see is it going to come to reality. That's the way I'm thinking.
Well, part of it, though, I, I, I understand exactly where you're coming, because I've said this in the past, too, that I don't want to get a fancy book like this that is going to go and sit right there.
Right.
Looking at. But part of it also is, if we don't have a roadmap and a plan, how are we going to figure out how much this is going to cost or that's going to cost? Or if we go and apply for grants, if we don't have a plan, it's just like, you're not going to go to the bank and say, you know, I want to open this new business. Well, what are you going to do? Oh, I'm just, I'm going to do this. I want a dedicated plan of what you're, a business.
I understand all that.
And that's part, I think, of what this will be. It will be a dedicated, a roadmap for us to follow. We may make changes or do things in there, and I mean, it'll probably be wonderful, but there's probably going to be no way we're going to have the funds to see everything done, but it's going to give us a start. And it will be a plan that we can apply for grants, go to the state.
Working.
Texas Parks and Wildlife. They're going to require that before they'll even talk to us.
Correct. Parks and Wildlife, you have to have that plan in place, or else you won't even be considered.
So, now we're jumping up to Parks and Wildlife and everything. So, if we're doing all of this to try to secure a grant, let's set that up front, and it's, instead of just saying that we're trying to have someone do a study.
Well, the, the reality is, we don't know when that grant will be available or when we would be able to apply. They, they are sporadic on when they release those. They are, they, they pick and choose what projects or what types of initiatives. Sometimes, they're looking for connectivity with walking, hike and bike trails. Sometimes, they're looking for inclusive play spaces. Sometimes, they're looking for other kinds of recreational activities. And, and so, the plan, having all of those in it, allows us to pursue whatever grant comes across.
Only thing that I don't want to happen is we do this study and it's set on the shelf. Let's try to make it move.
One hundred percent. Agreed.
We don't want that either as staff. I can tell you, a lot of work goes into this, and so, you know, we, we definitely don't want that either. But we do want to know that what we're doing, when we do spend the limited funds that we have, is making the biggest impact in our community. And that's a big piece of this, too, that helps us determine. Because I could go out here and I could tell you, I want twenty-five thousand dollars to put a splash pad over here, but if the community doesn't want that, then we're wasting twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. This, this last study that we had about Brewley Park over there, I think Burditt did that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. When they come to town to do a town hall meeting with the citizen and everything, make sure nothing else in town is going on, because last time turnout wasn't that great, because something else was going on.
I believe this time, we have it built in where we actually get two, I think, this time. I think that's right.
Because we want the citizens, because the citizen is going to be the one who pays for this, and we want the citizen to buy into it. And that's the way it's going to move.
They'll also do the online survey again as well, like they did last time, and they had a really great response last time. They were really pleased with the online survey, so that'll be a piece of this as well.
Mayor and council, I did want to step back real quick, just for clarification. Councilman Harris asked about the, the vetting process and the evaluation by staff, and if we didn't give you the, the scoring metrics, we can certainly provide that to you all. But one thing to, to keep in mind is, this was a request for qualifications, not a request for proposals. When you use engineering, architectural design, professional services like that, you do it through a, an RFQ process, which evaluates your interested parties based on their qualifications. And so, oftentimes, what you find is a, a firm that has years of experience, has demonstrated that experience, and even has a past relationship with a community. Oftentimes, they do serve as the best option for a community, because they don't have to start from scratch, and, and the staff kind of knows that. They already know what value they're going to get. They know what work product they're going to get for the money. And, and so, in this case, we had a couple that were relatively new to the market, new to the area. And it doesn't mean we don't ever want to give those folks a chance, but this is a big investment for our community to, to steer our development for a long time. So, going with someone who we know we've, we've worked with in the past and have had success with, I think is, is a pretty good option in, in moving, moving it forward. But we will also make sure that you all get the scoring metrics and what, what it looked like for the, for the three firms.
Yeah, because, yeah. A firm reached out to me and said, you know, why come, you know, you voted for this firm? And I don't, man, I don't even know who the other two is.
Right. Understood. Yes, sir.
So, is, on, for this item, are we're not approving a budget number, expense number? Or is this just to approve them to offer us what the cost would be?
You've already approved that in the last, in the last. You've already approved that in the last, in the fiscal budget for this year. We already have it set aside for the master plan.
So what's the cost on, on this? We don't.
What was the amount?
Sixty-five is the, the base.
We budgeted $75,000 and the updated number that we got was $72,000.
So this is on top of what we paid the $50,000 for three months ago?
For, are you speaking about the Brewley Park project?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that will roll into this, but yes, that cost, this cost is separate.
So what can we have all that at first together if it was the park plan?
The feasibility study was not budgeted. That was something that we brought to council last year because we knew that we needed to act on the pool and wanted to look at that whole park area and the facilities as one. So at that point, we had not received approval for funding for a master plan, but still felt that with the issues that we were having with the pool and, and other areas, we wanted to go ahead and move forward with that piece of it.
Well, the pool wasn't in the budget last year. We voted to pay for that extra.
Right. But at the time, we were still trying to figure out what we wanted to do with the pool. And so we brought that to council as an option to study. And instead of just studying the pool, like look at that area holistically, the Navasota Center, the pool house, the pool and Brewley Park, about options that we'd like to see for the future. So it was really kind of a campus master plan just for that area. And then for the fiscal year 2425 budget, we requested additional funding to look at all parks. It includes all trails earlier where we talked about connectivity, how to make sure we're ensuring connectivity across the city. It also looks at open spaces. And so instead of just looking at one area, it looks at all of them. And that's what we budgeted for, for this year, and that's what we're trying to move forward with tonight.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you, sir.
Everyone, I'm Paul Howard with Burditt Consultants. I'm the project manager for this project. Should you choose to enter an agreement with us?
I just want to make sure that what you've already done over at Brew Park, I think we had a plan one, two, and three, which I don't think we kind of agreed on which plan we was going to go with, right? Okay.
The consensus that we received from feedback was more in line with Plan Three. That was the favored plan.
The lesser expensive.
Okay. From what you have done over there already, is that going to go inside of what you're going to do for the rest of the parks?
We'll definitely package that part of it into the, into the overall Parks Master Plan. What we did with the Brewley Park feasibility study was, is a much more hyper focused and intensive study of that particular site. One, because of the immediate pool issues. And, and two, we, we had to reach out to the public to find out, well, what did people want this to look like in the future? Because there was opportunities for the more nostalgic, traditional pool that you've all known for many decades, or something more modern. And, and so we are studying all of the options there and then providing detailed opinions of cost and a, in 3D renderings to show you what it could look like. So the, the, the overall Parks Master Plan is a much broader vision. It is a visionary document, so we're reaching out to the community intensively to find out what everybody wants in all aspects of recreation, whether it's parks and trails or programs and activities and events. And, but it's also a pragmatic document. It's going to be your capital improvements plan for your park system. We will have conceptual renderings for recommendations that will be detailed enough and accompanied by opinions of probable costs that allow you to make decisions, inform decisions about what you want to do next. So those will reflect the input we receive from the community and then they're going to be put into a usable plan so that should you choose to execute one of those projects in the future, you've got enough information to make those decisions, whether that's a full park renovation or individual components of your park system that could be picked à la carte as funding and opportunities come up. And then in addition to that, there is, we were asked to provide a review of your park dedication ordinance. You do have a park dedication ordinance in place, which the premise is that it will, that the cost of new parks to meet the growing demand as new development, new residential development comes in will be borne by those new residents. So you're not increasing the, the, the load on the existing park system with all these new residents. So that means new development is required to either dedicate land and as for parks and develop them, or dedicate a fee in lieu of that land that can be used for both at land acquisition and development of those parks. If you already have a fairly robust parkland dedication ordinance, what we'll be doing is evaluating it to make sure that it is defensible for one, so that if you, if you're contested by a developer, you have a, a fair and reasonable metric for why you're charging a certain fee or requiring a certain amount of land. And that's, there's a formal process that Dr. John L. Crompton came up with. He's the leader in the nation on this, these types of ordinances and specifically in Texas, that makes sure it's fair and equitable because it's based on the, the amount of existing parkland you currently have and then the amount of expected growth. So as you have, say, 100 new dwelling units, then you're going to supply X number of acres of park or the equivalent in, in market value for land and the cost of development. So we'll be evaluating that as a separate white paper that will be delivered to the city that can be used to update your current fee structure, which is in your ordinance by reference. And in fact, your ordinance says y'all are supposed to periodically update those fees so that you're, you're keeping up with the times and changing land cost. And then we have another component in that master plan document that is going to be a separate analysis of the stage that you currently have temporary in the back of the property here and looking at options for what a permanent solution might look like that is, that fits the character of this beautiful building, but is functional. And so we'll be studying that, it kind of, it's kind of a mini feasibility study so the city can dip their toes in the water and find out what that would take, what that could look like and what it would cost. And so that will be a summary document that's provided to the city as well.
And I think a question that I had before you got here at our first meeting, the Trails Master Plan, does that include sidewalks?
Well, not typically like more, we, we consider anything that's at least eight foot wide, a trail, anything less is typically a sidewalk. We can certainly, you know, include that inventory sidewalks in the overall assessment of connectivity, but we wouldn't be making recommendations for, you know, a detailed sidewalk plan for every street in the city. This would be more recreational.
Sorry. So I think back whenever this was done before, maybe it was the time before that or the time before that, I'm not sure. But there was a, an attempt to connect one park to Victoria Park, maybe, by just painting a line on the, on the asphalt road so that we could say that our road, our parks were connected. That's really what I'm getting at is the connectivity of the parks to each other, which would then potentially connect the entire town to each other. Is that something that you're looking at? If, if the qualification is eight foot wide, then I'm going to assume that's a no.
Well, we'll be looking at all the opportunities for more connections because I've been doing this for 23 years and in every community, 100% of the time, trails is the number one thing people ask for and every single time. And so, and I can bet money right now that when we go through this process, that the number one desired thing you're going to find in this public involvement process is going to be trails. So looking for those opportunities, whether that means recommending possibly going underground with drainage on an open ditch street for a certain connection, so that you do have that right of way to put in a proper off-street trail. That's because bike lanes not are, are not always the best option. Looking at where, you know, Tech dot right of ways, there's lots of opportunities now with that because the transportation set aside program with the Tech dot funds grants to actually put trails as alternative modes of transportation along Tech dot corridor. So things like that will be considered and looking at to connect neighborhoods to public spaces, schools, parks, and, and looking for grant opportunities for those specifically.
Well, I would just say the connections between the parks, let's call them trails.
We can do that.
About that. So keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
One other question here. In meeting with the public, do your company set the date or do the city set the date?
Well, we'll work together. We'll suggest a timeframe, you know, the cities are busy, so we want to, and we would certainly want your input because we don't want to overlap with a major community event that's going on, like, like sports leagues that are having their tournament or whatever it is or.
Yeah, the reason I asked that question was because when we did the Brew Park first meeting, their junior high was started playing football that their first night and all the mothers and grandpas and grandmas went to the game and, and they didn't have opportunity to come there. So if you can kind of.
We'll make sure we're on. Yep.
Yeah, we'll make a best effort to make sure we've got a, a nice window for that. And as mentioned, we will have two community workshops. Well, this will be roll up your sleeves, working in small groups with facilitators from our staff at every table and walking them through a series of topics. And so that way, everybody gets their voice heard. If you do a town hall style, only one person gets to speak at a time and it really limits the amount of input. This is more of a dialogue where each, each table has individuals all talking together and they have a chance to, to speak their mind and, and then present it to the larger audience. We will have an online survey, of course, and we've got the, the benefit of your concurrent comprehensive plan process where we can share information between us and the consultants so that we're getting as much of input as possible.
We authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Burditt Consultants for the Navasota Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan Project.
Mayor and Council, could you include in the motion the sub, the final form of the agreement being subject to the approval of the city manager and the city attorney, legal counsel? There are a number of items that we're going to request that on, on tonight's agenda, but just so that we would have the authority to make sure that the final form of the agreement is in the city's best interest.
Fine. Yep.
Motion by Mr. Gessler, second by Mr. Fulks to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Burditt for Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan and.
Final form to be approved by the city manager and legal counsel.
That.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? See, not item carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Tiffany. Item 11, consideration of possible action for the approval of the recommendations from ECS Energy Coating Systems to install ASTEC number 2000 insulating coating system on the library roof in the amount of $29,662 and one penny.
Good evening, City Council. Mr. Mayor, Jay Chappell, Parks and Recreation Facility and Maintenance Manager. I'm here to, in my short tenure, I have done a few projects for the city, but this has been on my plate to look into for a while. I know we've had a number of different recommendations. However, based on the recommendation of City Council and Robert, we met with Doug Loomis with Energy Coating Systems. He's here today to answer any questions. He did a full inspection of the roof and determined that the roof is actually in relatively good shape, just needs some love. One of the recommendations he made was to do an inspection of water penetration with a pressure wash of the entire roof and a clean out on the gutters to find out where that water is actually getting into the building and causing the past damage that we have experienced. The next step that he proposed is a coating system using the Aztec 2000 protective coating. After we do the inspection to find out where the possible penetration points are, repair the roof as needed where those penetration points are, and then come through and do some work on the downspout for the gutter on the front. We've had some clogging issues there, but basically to go through and make sure all the fasteners are tight, replace any looser missing fasteners that he finds on the roof and then apply the coating system, which will come with a 10-year renewable turnkey warranty on all labor and materials.
A good warranty.
Lot better than the 250,000.
Who am I telling you?
Or 400,000.
400,000?
400, that's excellent.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, the, the one thing that I'll add to that is, as you all know, you know, had we been required to replace it in its whole, we did, we could have done that and we would have had $0 left to do any of the interior repairs for the damage that has occurred over the time that it's been leaking. This savings has allowed us, and Jay has already started getting quotes for mold remediation, replacing attic insulation where it's damaged, ceiling tiles, flooring. So we're going to be able to do all of those things and still come in less than what we had budgeted. And, and so that's going to allow us to do some other facility improvements with that, that money. So I, I think getting a 10-year warranty on this, it just really doesn't make business sense to, to spend 10 times as much for potentially a 30-year warranty, but when we've got a 10-year warranty for, for one tenth of the cost, it just, it just really took, to staff that, that really seemed like the right choice.
But Jay, in reading the, the specs here and everything, on the gutters up at the library.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that they can go back and put a screen net over that to keep the leaves from going in there and clogging up stuff?
I think the answer would be yes, there is. I, we haven't looked into that as a detail. I can probably let Doug speak to that a little bit more if you, if you have questions for him. But there is a way we can do a screen netting. The biggest trees that we deal with that clog those gutters and cause the biggest problem are the crepe myrtles that are right there at the entrance. And it's one or two times a year right now is when they're dropping most of their flowers and all the leaves that are coming off there. One of the maintenance projects or the consistency that we will be putting off is also making sure, not putting off, but taking care of, is making sure that those gutters are cleaned out on a monthly basis, especially during the fall season and then going into the spring because those leaves do accumulate and that does cause an issue. One of the main issues we're, we're dealing with at those entrances is the slope of those gutters. Because the side entrance, it's an old gutter. Over time, they lose their slope towards the actual drainage. So water accumulates at the corners, which is what's causing the damage on the gutters. We want to fix that slope and put it in the right direction and also add a downspout on the side to make that water flow properly out of those gutters as opposed to accumulating on the corners, which is not necessarily flowing back into the building, but it is causing the gutter system to, to slowly fail over time.
Right. Because I went up there here probably 10, 12 days ago after I've got several emails and, and kind of looked at it and when I walked around the building, I've seen that the gutters need to be cleaned up and what.
Yep. So we, my, my crew will be going up there to blow out those gutters on a monthly basis to make sure that they are cleaned out and being used or being able to be used properly. But the repairs to the gutters on the side of the building will make a big difference on the water flow, being able to properly leave the side of that building. It's my understanding, based on past experience, the main water penetration was happening where the flat roof meets the pitch of the main metal roof. So a lot of the repairs are going to be focused around that area to make sure that that water accumulation, especially where the gutters meet that corner, the water is going where it's supposed to go and the slope is done properly and those gutters stay clean.
You said the gap is here for the roof.
Yes, Doug is here. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to make, my name is Doug Loomis. I live at 615 North Tenth Street, so I'm a Navasota person. I want to make one clarification that, that I probably didn't relay properly. This, these two proposals that I show here are not to be done both. It's an either or. The first proposal of the 15,000 was simply to do just inspection, clean the roof and just inspect, make some repairs, nothing more. The second proposal includes all those steps and then adds the coating system so that if that's the proposal chosen, then the entire investment would be the 30,000.
That's.
Not, not 50.
That's our proposal to council is the 20,000.
All right. I just want to make, make sure that was clear. And the renewable warranty part of that, in effect, if a proper coating system is maintained. And the renewable warranty part of that, in effect, if a proper coating system is maintained, it becomes a sustainable roof at that point. You never have to remove the roof, you never have to tear it off. You just maintain the coating because the coating is the only thing that wears. It doesn't affect, it protects the metal and doesn't allow the metal to deteriorate. So a well-maintained coating system would be the last time you ever have to address the roof itself, the metal part of the roof, which is the most expensive thing to deal with. Now, questions?
Yes, sir. Number one, glad to hear that you're from Navisota.
Yeah.
What color will this be?
The color is up, still hadn't been determined. Typically, when we do major industrial work, it's all bright white. I don't know that you'd want a bright white roof on the library. We can tint it, we can make it whatever color you want, but right now it's kind of an off gray. It can be tinted to a gray or it can be a beige or I've got it figured in as a colored coating, but the color hasn't been determined.
Yeah, the thought was just to make it match what's there in the area and pick something that on the color palette that he has that'll match the adjacencies.
Yes. Be pretty, sun, sun tracks white also. My other question was, and I think that you already answered, was that if there be a leak and you've come back and put another coat on top of it, what about the weight of the roof? Have you determined that the roof will hold that amount of weight?
Yeah, the coating system is insignificant when you're talking about weight. We've done studies on that before. I probably shouldn't have called it a study. We should do study.
Been listening.
I had to answer that question for a big, large firm one time because the industrial project that we're concerned about it, it's so minuscule amount because it's only about a 14 mil dry film thickness, which is about the thickness of cardboard. So, and it's distributed over the whole frame. So it really doesn't matter how many times you would coat it. The renewable part of the warranty, the warranty is a leak proof warranty for 10 years. It's actually issued by the manufacturer. It's not by the contractor, which we are, it's the manufacturer of the product, which is an advantage. If you wanted to keep the roof in a leak proof warranty state, every 10 years, you add more coating to it and then they issue another brand new warranty. That's optional. We have a lot of customers that they'll be in year 15, 16, and we'll call them and say, would you like to have your roof, you know, recoated and put back into warranty? And they'll say, well, why? We don't have any leaks. So it's purely optional to do that. My recommendation sometimes is just, it doesn't have to be every 10 years, just wait and see if you need it. But that roof, the 25 years of experience I have in strictly a commercial roofing industry, that roof really is a good, is in good shape. It just needs to have the current leaks detected, fixed. And then if you want to upgrade the appearance of it, you know, add more coating and get it into a warranted system. And that does cover any leaks that you have. I can tell you though, from my experience, any leaks that develop during that 10-year period, more than likely are not going to be from the coating. It's going to be something else that happens, you know, storms or something like that. It's just, it's a good system. My guys have been doing it for, some of them for 20 years now, they're pretty thorough. They know what they're doing.
Okay, that's, that's the only question I had. Thanks.
Mayor and Council, this is another one of those items, if you would add that language about final form of the agreement being approved by the city manager and legal counsel.
One other question, Jay. One of the emails that I received from the citizen was that it was the oddest smell in the library, but when I went up there, I didn't smell anything. Have you all smelled that occasionally?
I guess Tiffany would be the one to speak to it, right?
Yeah, so especially during rainstorms because we've had rodents upstairs. So what leaks then is the rodent droppings and things like that. So we've had several complaints about odor in the building, especially when it's rained or right after a rain and there's a musty smell normally in the building.
So just so everyone's clear, this morning I actually had a air quality and mold testing done at the library when no one was there, just to make sure that if there is anything lingering, we can find it and we can address it as quickly as possible. So that did happen this morning. I went ahead and moved forward with having that testing done. One of the things he did mention is that it is very humid in the back hallway, but that back hallway is just a single glass, right? It's higher in humidity back there than it usually is in the front, but he said it's about 66% versus 60, so it's right, little bit above the threshold. One of the things that I want to move forward with is repairing the attic access door. Replacing that attic access door. That way it is shut properly 100% of the time as opposed to slightly at ajar. I think that is one of the main reasons why the humidity is lingering in that back hallway is that the heat from the attic is able to come down into that one little spot. But other than that, I should have the results back, hopefully by the end of this week for the testing that goes on there. It will, if there is anything there, obviously we will address it as quickly as possible.
Oh, I'm sorry. My other question was, and you probably can answer this, is that if we decide to go this route with the roof, with the library still be open or would it have to be closed for some time?
No, it's my understanding we can keep the library open because it's all done exterior for the most part. More than likely, the testing that we'll do from the pressure washing, we'll try to do that maybe on an off day like a Monday morning. That way, if there is any penetration that we have to address, we can do it relatively quickly. But no, the library should not need to be shut down for this operation.
We approve the proposal from Energy Coating Systems to install the Aztec 2000 Insulating Coating System on the library roof for a total cost of $29,662.01. With the proviso provided by our legal expert. Second. Motion by Mr. Guestner, second by Mr. Harris to approve the recommendation of going with Aztec 2000 coating system on the library roof in the amount of $29,662.01. And the added language as stated. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would just like to thank the newly city manager for saving the city $195,000 that can go towards something else. Just want to give you a shout out.
Thanks, sir.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? See, none item carries.
Thank you.
Item 12, consideration of possible action authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Attico Consulting Engineers for an impact fee study.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll kind of start this one off and then to introduce the owner of Attico to answer any questions you might have. And this will also be one of those ones that Kerry has been asking for the, you know, final form of the agreement to be approved by himself. So as we've discussed a couple of different times in the budget workshop and other times, one of the things that we would like to kick off is an impact fee study to make sure that we are prepared for our infrastructure to be able to provide the growing community, the new development areas. And this action tonight does not adopt impact fees, it doesn't put impact fees in place. It just gets, it is a study, I understand, but it also brings a recommendation of here's what development you're expecting, here's what the cost to improve your current infrastructure systems will be, and here's what the proposed impact fees would be per residential lot. And so it'll lay it out for us and then we'll, you all will make the decision of yes, we want to adopt those or no, we don't. There's a public hearing that goes along with that. There's a process for adopting impact fees laid out by state law. And so this was budgeted last year, it wasn't carried forward in this year, but we'd like to go ahead and get it started. We'll put it into the CIP fund. We'll put the funds in there to carry it through, through completion. And then you all can decide on whether or not you want to adopt. I know that there has been some negative publicity about impact fees. I can tell you, coming from a community that had them, it's not that you're trying to drive development away, and we certainly didn't have a problem with the development coming even though we had impact fees. But it is a tool for us to use to discuss with the developers to make sure that they are carrying their own weight and providing their own capacity for the infrastructure needs of new development and we're not burdening our existing residents as we prospect for potential new residents. We let the development carry its own weight. And so with that, Din Ho, who's the owner of Attico Consulting Engineers, who I've worked with in my previous city, come on up, is here and happy to answer any questions on the impact fee study, the process. He actually has a consultant that he uses that actually lives down here in Brenham. He's just on vacation right now. So Din's here and he'll ask, answer any questions you have for tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity. As Robert mentioned, we, our firm, we're an engineering firm. We provide municipal service to a lot of our city clients, which are mostly municipalities. We provide engineering service and part of that is doing studies for impacts for growing development, growing cities. So this, the impact fee study is regulated by the Water Code, chapter 395 of the Water Code. So if you have any questions, can I answer your question?
On the impact fees, would it be you would choice the impact fees by the lot size or by the developer of acreage or how would you actually do that?
It's based on an equivalent single family connection. So for, based on a single lot. So based on water and sewer, the way water and sewer is defined is based on equivalents, single family connections. So if you have a commercial property based on how much water use, they, it's defined, the consumption rate and you divide it by a typical single family residential. So let's say you have 10,000 gallons per day. Typical residential is 360 gallons per day usage. You divide it by that number and that's the equivalent number of connections. So for a user that use 10,000 gallons per day, comes out to be about 30 connections. So their charge is based on the number of connections.
And each connection would be the same price.
Correct.
For each customer.
Correct.
The lot size.
Correct. Correct. So typically, if it's a 5/8 inch meter, 3/4 inch meter or a 1 inch meter that's representative of a single lot, single home, they'll be charged the same amount. And then for commercial, those that are mixed use or commercial industrial, it's based on their expected consumption. You can also adopt it by meter size. So there's equivalency based on the amount of consumption based on the meter size. And in our report, it'll detail what that is. So inch and a half meter typically is 5.33 connection. So you multiply that by the number of connection, I'm sorry, equivalent, single family connection to get that impact fee. So if the impact fee is $5,000, then you multiply 5,000 times that 5.33 and that would be their cost for the impact fees.
The impact fee is not only on water.
It's on water and wastewater. This particular study is only for water and wastewater.
Oh, it's not on gas?
I'm sorry?
It's not on gas?
No, sir. Not for this one.
Or streets?
You could, that would have to be a separate study. This one is specifically for water and sewer. That's what we, but if you desire for impacts on road improvements, there are very few cities that does it and it's more for areas where there's high level of commercial usage that utilizes road impact fees, like city of San Antonio uses, city of Sugarland currently recently adopted, and also City of Lake City recently adopted. So those larger, much larger cities, they've adopted those. They've studied, there's a comprehensive study based on traffic counts and expected impact on each roadway.
Well, the developer would have to put the road in anyway, wouldn't it? Then it returned.
Yeah, so what you can do in lieu of that, and Din and I have actually had this conversation, roads, usually the developer that's adjacent to, that develops, you know, a community adjacent to a roadway is responsible for putting in their half of the roadway, so to speak, if they have, you know, the south half instead of the north half. But what happens is if you had a square mile, for instance, and it was heavily commercial, the developers that aren't on that main road, that main boulevard section are not really paying. They might be driving just as many customers across those roads, but just because they didn't have frontage right on there, they're not really paying anything towards that. Just the developer that had the frontage on it is paying the cost. And so a road impact study would allow you to come up with a formula of, let's say, in a square mile, there are X number of feet of boulevard required for this. And so whatever portion of a section, 640 square miles, if we did a square mile, whatever portion of that you're developing, then you pay that portion of the cost of developing roads for that square mile. So it's, again, that's not something we envisioned in doing right now. This was primarily for water and sewer infrastructure, just because we didn't want to try to do everything all at one time. And gas wasn't something that we really were prepared to jump into. So we just wanted to get, water and sewer are the most common, they're governed by the Water Code and they're pretty common. So that's what we wanted to start off with. If we then decide, hey, we also need to do gas, then we can easily add that on. We just felt like the easiest way is to go with the system that is most common and is most understood by developers and cities alike. I did want to also just say one thing that I left out. The way impact fees were, impact fees are only on new development, they're only applied. They don't apply to if someone rebuilt their house or remodeled their home or any of those kind of things, infill kind of things. These are for newly developed areas. And what the study would do is they would go out and they would look at, okay, in the next 10 years, we think we're going to have, I'm going to use just a number, 2,000 lots developed or the equivalent of 2,000 lots developed. And to support those 2,000 lots, his study would tell us, okay, we need this much of capital improvement projects on the water side and we need this much on the wastewater side. And you just take that number, the total capital improvement projects investment to serve the new development only, you divide it by the 2,000 and that's your impact fee. And there's two separate impact fees, ones for water, ones for sewer. And so then what we would do going forward is we would work with the developers on, there are ways for them to get offsets by, they might provide their own capacity, they might drill a well, provide their own water, convey it over to us, connect it into our system, and we might waive the water portion of the impact fees. Alternatively, if it wasn't, if we weren't in a position to handle their wastewater, they might. they might put in their own wastewater plant. This would be a big development. It's not any of the ones that we've been talking about, but we could, they could potentially put in their own wastewater plant and we, and we say, okay, if you'll do that, you convey it over to us, we'll connect it into the system and we'll waive the wastewater side. So it, it's, they don't necessarily pay both. It just depends on how the negotiations go as we're talking about development agreements with, with the new developers. But I just wanted it to be clear that it's really, it's only the CIP projects for the, those systems that are specific to dealing with the new development. And it's just divided by the number of lots we anticipate being developed over the course of, of that time. Pretty straightforward. It sounds complex, but when they, when, once they do all the, they'll do all the hard work and bring it back to us and it'll be nice and spelled out for us.
What is the, so I keep thinking about the developer that came to us and we told him that he had to put in a sidewalk and he said, I'm not doing it because it's going to add a thousand dollars per lot. And he's like, no, I can't afford that. It's, nobody will buy it. Where do we, what do we know is our limit for developers that will pay versus we'll say, Pat, we're moving on to the next town?
You can incorporate that in your design criteria manual and they would have to be responsible for. Once you, you develop and adopt those, maybe you already, you have, I think you already have some development guidelines, but those criterias can be incorporated into it and adopted by council. And it, it would require the developer to be in compliance, just like any codes you adopt.
Yes, sir. I get that piece. I'm saying that at some point, do we price ourselves out of our land?
I think you could, but I think the reality is developers all over Texas are, are making the, making deals pencil, as they say. They're making them profitable in communities that have impact fees and communities where they're having to provide the infrastructure, in communities where they're having to provide sidewalks. Generally, my experience has been, and I've, I've talked to a lot of developers and gotten a lot of them across the finish line. Generally, when they come in and your first couple of meetings, they, they're talking about things not working, my advice to them usually is sharpen your pencil and we'll figure it out. Because they very rarely move on because they can't make it work. They're just trying to pad their pocket, their profit.
The developer's not, not paying this, the developer's passing it on. You, you have a home that, that costs $300,000 or something like that? And the developer will tell you that an extra thousand dollars is, is going to keep him from developing the property.
Now that happen?
What other options would we have to help defray these costs if we didn't go with it?
So in my, my experience, the, the options really, if you didn't want to have impact fees, the, the options are really not palatable. They're either give them special districts like muds so that they can tax those residents and, and provide the infrastructure. Or we build it on the backs of our current residents and we raise our utility rates even higher. And we heard tonight, some that spoke about utility rates and that's the opposite of what we're trying to do. So I, I, I think it's one of the, one or the other. We either let them tax the resident, the new residents with a mud or, or we put that burden on the backs of our current residents and I don't think any of us want to do that.
In the mud, we lose control.
100%. I've, I've had that fight before, so I'd, I'd rather we don't go down that road.
So what we're doing right now is that when the subdivision could come in and deal them in the city limits here and everything, the city is somewhat using, I'm going to use the word Eden.
That's, that has been the past practice. It's.
Been our responsibility.
Yeah. We, we've, we've all.
Every citizen's responsibility.
We have had, in, in, in recent meetings, and we had one even just this past week, the, kind of the approach that, that I've been taking, kind of it, I wouldn't call it my direct, um, direction from you all, but inferred direction, what, what I'm, the approach I'm taking is if they're asking us for favors, like a development agreement where they don't want to hold 100% of our ordinances, they look, they're looking for variances or, or some kind of special accommodations, well, then we're going to ask for them to, to carry their weight because that's our, when they're asking for something, we're going to have something that we're asking for. So even right now without impact fees, but in reality, if a developer came tomorrow and had 200 acres that they wanted to develop completely consistent within our, within our guidelines, um, asking for zero variances, we would have no recourse but to pay the, pay the cost of all of the infrastructure. And hope that those lots got developed and homes were there, put values that generated tax to help pay for it later.
Is there some kind of time delay involved in, in implementing these things?
Yes, sir. Once the, the impact fee is adopted, um, there's a one, one year waiver for plots that's already been.
Anything that's plotted.
Plotted, they get a one year waiver before the city can impose impact fees.
Okay. But if, if they haven't plotted it, they can't.
Soon as you adopt.
Soon as you adopt it.
Were there any changes made in the last legislature?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
There were discussion about it.
There were a couple proposed.
Yes, sir. There was.
They're usually meddling. Four year delay or something.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we give the city manager authority to go into agreement for the ADICO Consulting Engineer for Impact Fee Study on Water. With the language that the attorney have.
Thank you. You said water, but we're including both, right?
Water and sewage, water.
Water and sewage.
My question, Mr. Harris, second. I'm Mr. Fultz, to enter in professional agreement with Adico Consulting Engineers for the Impact Fee Study with the verbiage of previously stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Seeing none, item carried. Item 13, consideration possible action to appoint a comprehensive plan advisory committee for the ongoing comprehensive plan update.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, while it's still fresh in your memory, the comprehensive plan kickoff meeting we had a few weeks ago, getting all the nuts and bolts aligned to start on that process, our consultant, Public Management, did recommend that the council appoint a comprehensive plan advisory committee. This committee will be instrumental in really hearing feedback, having discussions about the comp plan update. And so they're recommending appointing at least a seven member. I was talking to Caitlin actually before the meeting and she's seen anywhere from five to seven to 10 even members. But one of those members, our recommendation is at least one council member to have representation from council, at least one or two planning and zoning commission members, as well as community stakeholders in that group. And Caitlin Higgins is here with Public Management. If y'all have any questions or something I can't answer. But the, the goal is to appoint this committee to be an instrumental part of that comprehensive plan update that we kicked off on the 23rd.
By the way, on the last meeting, Caitlin, you did a great job.
Thank you, sir. And if y'all have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I also wanted to make a comment, just also to like, make the important notice of a CPAC committee being made is also to limit the amount of time y'all have to spend here some nights, as we're sitting here at almost two and a half hours. Hopefully these meetings will be a lot shorter, but they can get pretty lengthy with all the items that we will be discussing. And also they'll be meeting on an as needed basis throughout the purpose of this plan. So hopefully that'll help a little bit with time management for y'all's teams.
I guess this question would be for Robert.
Yes, sir.
Have you thought of any appointments?
So my thought is that we would have Lupe and his staff, the ones that have been working with Public Management, continue to serve as kind of the staff liaison, but allow you all to appoint one or two of yourselves, one or two P and Z members, and then come up with a, a mechanism for us to appoint some community stakeholders, whether you want to do. You don't have to do that tonight. We, we, we don't have to come up with all the names tonight. No, sir. You can if you want, but.
I was also going to mention, when it comes to the idea of community stakeholders, those could be people that are already sitting on EDC boards, chamber boards. Those could be people that are working with the ISD, local hospital districts, local medical districts, people on the library board, anything like that would be local stakeholders, as well as if you have any members of the community that are, you know, own a lot of land, we see that a lot, that person typically ends up sitting on a board like this to help guide insight of development, just to give ideas of people to include on that list to give.
Now you threw that out there, so ask this.
Go for it. I'll answer anything.
Does that mean that whoever is going to, they just own land or live in the city? Are there requirements?
There is, it is whatever requirements y'all wish to set in place. So CPAC committee is not regulated by any state statutes. It is more a committee that is a best practice within the planning firm. So it is up to y'all's decision. Of course, having somebody that is living in Navasota is typically of the best interest because they know the tax rates, they know everything. Same with things with having a business owner that lives within Navasota as well.
That is.
Yeah.
See how that would be helpful?
Yeah. It's okay. Y'all are only our like fifth client in this region, so I know about everything there can be. And I'm an Aggie grad, so I've been here for four years, so.
So I, I would suggest that we probably have two council, two people from P and Z, and then come up with some additional names of folks that may have attended the first meeting, that are already showing an interest and potentially will show up again, that have the time to participate. I agree with that. Do we need to appoint them right now or can we just shoot you an email with potential names?
Those names that showed up in the first meeting, Susan, would they be in this package tonight? In the minutes?
I think so. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it was a workshop.
Probably would be in our workshop.
Yes, the visitors will be on the June 23rd minutes that are in your package. It'll save special meeting workshop on the top.
I think I would really prefer to, let's think about who those folks are and maybe reach out to them and not try to appoint.
I wouldn't appoint, yeah, without.
Yeah. Without, yeah, finding out if they're interested.
You don't want to hang them up to dry.
That's right.
I was also thinking about one of our county commissioners too, might be good.
Yeah, county, um, county representatives, I don't know if y'all have a good relationship with the tech dot representative, anything like that is also a good person to include.
So who should we send those names to?
Two. Yeah, we'll compile them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's only a possible.
I don't think you need to take any action.
Yeah, we'll take action on the next meeting. We'll compile them and let you discuss if there's a discussion needed and take action there.
Well, thank y'all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Item 14, consideration possible action on approval of the proposal from Terabella Construction for the replacement of four fire hydrants in the amount of 30, excuse me, $30,061.
Good evening, Mayor. Jennifer Rayna, Public Works Director. This item is for the possible approval for the proposal from Terabella Construction in replacing four fire hydrants in the amount of $30,061. These location, or these fire hydrants are placed at the following addresses. Highway 6 South Loop near Walmart, Kevin Court, the intersection of Senior Circle and that's located at the 42 Place, the intersection of Grimes and Turner. So staff is requesting approval for those four to be replaced in that amount of $30,061.
I'm the ones that you requested here. These are not one that had been replaced, what, last year that we replaced?
No, sir. So within, I would say the timeframe of like 2021, we had a total of about 60 out of service or need of some type of repair or replacement. We, since that, since then, we have replaced about or repaired about 35 or more than half have been repaired or replaced within the CIP project for the streets and utilities and the 2021 fire hydrant replacement project. So about more than half of those 60 plus hydrants that have been out of service or need to be repaired have already been repaired. We are currently working on a list with staff. I met with staff today. We're looking at locations for our staff to rebuild, repair them in-house instead of having to replace them. If they're not, if they can be rebuilt, we can do that with kits that we can purchase from a corn main or a supply house.
And two of these fire hydrants that I think that's on here is out of service right now, correct?
They're all out of service.
All of them?
Yes, sir. And I know one, they've all probably been out of service way too long, but we're, we're getting actually caught up. But like I said, since 2021, we had roughly over 60 either needed to be repaired or replaced. And we have done more than half of that. Now some of them kind of get on the list by, they get hit by cars. And so we do have to replace, we've replaced one already at the Carver School, at the intersection of the Spur 515. Not we, a contractor. The contractor has already replaced that one that's at the intersection of the Spur 515 and we saw right at, right at the Carver School. We did that here recently. So then we'll do four more by contractor if approved tonight. But we still have budget remaining to keep moving forward on repairing them in-house.
Attorney, tell me whether I'm wrong if I get to ask them too many questions about this, but the one in front of Carver School, we filed that against that car insurance, right?
We can submit that to the PD. Usually they are submitted to, to the PD. And I don't know if we've submitted that to.
We did.
It has been? Okay.
So we get reimbursed for it?
Let me check on the status for that.
If they have insured.
Yeah, it, it is a little bit more complicated that we can check on the status to see where we're at in that process.
Mayor, Council, this is the last item I will request the additional language on, so if you would include that in your.
You're on a roll tonight.
I'm going to be saying that all night long.
And Jennifer, you did say this was in the budget, right?
Yes, sir. We have an annual maintenance. We just recently, the last couple of years, we have a light item of a. of a maintenance of $100,000. With the repairs that, if you approve tonight, plus the one we did at the Carver School, we've spent roughly about $38,000 and then we're going to keep moving. We got about $60,000 left in the budget, um, that we can use on those rebuild kits and any supplies that we need.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, I move that we, uh, accept the approval of the proposal from Terrabella Construction, the replacement for the fire hydrant in the amount of $30,061 and everything that the attorneys add.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Fultz to approve the proposal from Terrabella Construction for the price, replacement of four, four, four fire hydrants in the amount of $30,061 with, uh, wording as stated by the, to the attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. And we are at item 15, consent agenda, which is the minutes for June 2025, municipal court report for the month of June 2025 and financials for May 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and the municipal court report for the month of June 2025 and the financials for the month of May 2025.
By Mr. Gester, second by Mr. Fultz to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. And with that being the final item, we are adjourned.
Mayor, I want to announce one thing. We found some